They have some beautiful mansions.
I did a building, two buildings, nineteen twenty-four, nineteen twenty-six. Ten to eighteen stories, just beautiful kind of pre-art deco, but really sound. It's just all these old buildings in the city district are just empty. And they couldn't tear them down because there was doors.
Yeah.
They tore down all the buildings around them. They were just standing in the middle of nowhere, nothing around them, parking lots. Two blocks from the baseball stadium and a block.
Really?
We give it Bob with the merit. So, it's interesting. But it was freezing, it was like one degree there.
Yeah. You know what, when one of my nurses, her husband works for a company that tears down buildings, and they told her to pour down one in Lebworth. When they did, he salvaged all the wood on the doors and the stuff. And she had it in her barn for fifteen years. She said, "I'm getting rid of this." So she sold it to me for three hundred dollars.
Nice wood.
And when we had our fire, I used that wood to redo the third floor.
So like for trim and going in?
It really turned out well. It's just, you couldn't match it.
Oh. How are you?
No. I can't match it. I was able to read the building.
Oh.
Just down the basement.
Yeah.
Unbelievable, the size of some of them.
Yeah. And you know, back then, a two-by-four was actually two inches by four inches. One and three and a half by one, one and three quarters.
Okay. Should we go?
I think so.
Want me to start?
Your call, sir.
Another minute, I know, I just...
Is that him out there at home?
Hmm?
Is that him out there coming to the door?
No. Who is Bill?
Oh, that's Bill Flannin. Okay. I couldn't tell.
Needs some infrastructure. Let's all start, huh?
Yeah. Good beer for the first time.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March fourth, two thousand fourteen Lawrence City Commission meeting. We have no recognitions or proclamations this evening, so we'll move straight to the consent agenda. And all matters listed on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of those items. If separate discussion is desired, item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Is there an item that a member of the commission would like removed from the consent agenda?
Item three for vote, Mayor.
Item three, okay. Is there an item, anything else? Is there an item that a member of the public would like removed from the consent agenda? Okay, uh, so let's go ahead and add claims to vendors of a hundred, a hundred and fifty-three vendors of, ooh, three million eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-three cents. And that's less the item that I think you want to speak to. Is there a motion to approve this?
Moved, second.
A motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Farmer, seconded by Vice-Mayor Amick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes four-zero with Commissioner Shum absent. Item three would be the subtotal of Rock Chalk Park items. Mike?
Yeah, just for vote, Mayor.
Great. There's forty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars to two vendors related to Rock Chalk Park. Is there a motion?
Motion, so moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Reardon, seconded by Commissioner Farmer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes three-one with Commissioner Amick dissenting and Commissioner Shum absent. Next item is the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. A few items in this week's report. You see a recap of the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen holiday lights. We kept the lights up longer this year, and we think that that was successful. And they're light, they're, they're down now, and appreciate all the hard work from the Parks and Recreation Department for that. But we think that it was successful to keep them up a little bit here in some dark, cold evenings after Christmas. Got the two thousand thirteen ridership update from the Transit Division. Continued growth in the number of the ridership data that you have there. Fixed route continues to grow. T-Lift, we don't necessarily want it to grow, we want to provide the service, but we want those, those riders to also use the fixed route system as much as possible. And then we inaugurated the Nightline Service to particularly try and serve some of the late shift workers. And that seems to be a success as well. So continued strong work from our Transit Operations and obviously real strong cooperation with KU's student ride program as well. By, by city code, we prepare a review of the annual revenue and expenditures from the building permits. And you see that report put together. And we've complied with that for a number of years. And we'd be happy to respond to any questions, but we don't really have any action items coming from that report. Then finally, staff is devoting quite a bit of time to working on sidewalk issues. We have talked a little bit in this room about our sidewalk infrastructure. We have been facilitating a little bit, but primarily just helping the pedestrian coalition, which is not a city advisory board, but is instead a citizen-created group that's looking at sidewalk and related pedestrian issues. And I met with them, Chuck and I met with them here a few weeks back, and really applauded their interest and effort in regards to that. They asked a number of different questions. You see our responses there, I want to make sure that you see that. And I think it's not any secret, we don't do a good job in responding to some of the complaints that we have for busted sidewalks in the community. We work with those property owners, but we don't have the staff to condemn sidewalks, except on just a few occasions where we've really seen it as particularly egregious. So that's going to be something we'll be talking about in our two thousand fifteen budget deliberations. Also, want to get a better inventory of our sidewalk conditions. You all are very familiar with our pavement condition index that we use to tell us which streets to repair and whether or not we're making any progress in regards to that. We need a strong inventory, not only of where sidewalks are, we've probably got a pretty good snapshot of that, but what kind of condition they're in. So we're going to hire some temporary workers here in the spring to inventory our sidewalks. We think we've got a pretty good template. Obviously, one of the keys when you do an inventory is a little bit of quality control, that you're getting good information throughout the whole community. So we hope to have that information in time for two thousand fifteen budget deliberations. One of the questions that you all will face is, do we want to take over that sidewalk maintenance responsibility? We've talked about that, but we've never made any progress in that area, and that would, we think, require new resources. So at least we'll have good data as to what we think we might have to spend in regards to sidewalk maintenance. So that's a overview of that issue. I'll be happy to respond to any questions that you might have.
Any questions for the city manager?
Yeah, I have one. Mayor, the item that deals with the revenue and expenses and building inspections is all, because the revenues, the shortfall there was less than the twenty percent, says that no action is required, recommended related to increase or decrease. So for two thousand fifteen, it is the recommendation that there won't be a change in building permits, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're talking about the right year. Okay.
Any other questions?
I, I just had one other thing. When going to Kansas City the last two days, I had been real pleased that the ridership in the mornings has been excellent. There's been, I've seen a number of people out getting the bus. One of the concerns I had was that we have some places where they're protected, it's awfully cold, and there's a number of places that are not protected. How, are we making progress on areas where we can have bus stops, where people can get out of the weather, at least out of the wind?
Sure, that's, that's a good question. We've, we have stepped up on some of the amenities where we actually have shelters, they're not heated, they're just...
Yeah, right.
Out of, out of the wind and usually a place to sit and maybe a trash can. We have, as you probably have noticed, really moved toward areas where we're going to have bus stops. You see the new blue signs, and we've talked about how you can find out whether the bus is on time. It'd probably be good for Bob to kind of update about where we are with, with plans. We've done some bus shelter work, and you know, primarily where we see that the need. One of the other challenges with that, as you may have observed, is just making sure that there's a good path to get to those shelters. We've got a contract where somebody goes around and shovels them out, but maybe not the sidewalk to the shelter. So, but it'd be probably good to ask Bob to kind of update us where we are in regards to acquiring shelters, whether or not we see that. One of the, the key things that we have done is the Metropolitan Planning Organization has prepared a study on accessibility issues to the stops. And that's in the process now, I think, of going to the MPO and then formally coming to you all. I had it, I think I had the initial report on the city manager's report. It gets at some of those issues, but not so much the amenities, but more getting to those locations. So let's, let's see if we can update that report and get that, I think that'd be good to have.
Yeah, I think that would be good, especially, you know, with safety and having places for the buses to pull off to the side. So, thank you.
Sure.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the regular agenda items, or other regular agenda items. And you'll be able to speak for four minutes. At three minutes and thirty seconds, I'll ring this bell, and it'll be time to wrap up. And if you guys could remember to silence your cell phones, that'd be great. First item on the agenda is to consider recommendations of the Traffic Safety Commission for parking restrictions along the north side of Stevens Drive.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Last week, you all received a recommendation from the Traffic Safety Commission for parking restrictions along Stevens Drive, and it was somewhat confusing because what they recommended was different than what was originally requested. So I prepared a map, which I hope will make that a little bit easier to understand. On that map, the yellow line is what was the original request, and that was no parking along the entire north side of Stevens Drive from Lawrence Avenue to Wellington Road. The Traffic Safety Commission recommendation is shown as in green, and that is fifty feet either side of Pamela Lane on the north side, and then on both sides of Stevens for fifty feet east of Lawrence. Based on that, staff was directed to check with the property owner on the south side of the street, which we did, and the person that owns that property indicated they would prefer that there no, be, be no changes on the south side of the street. The blue line that's shown there, after further investigation, is actually how much parking is restricted by state law and city code today because of the location of the stop sign. So with all that, it brings it down to the ordinance that's presented tonight, which is what's shown in red, and that's just the fifty feet along the north side of Stevens on each side of Pamela Lane. So with that, I'll try to respond to any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks for drawing the map.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, that was very helpful.
So the blue line is only on the north side of the street, the, covered by state and city code?
Yeah, there is some that's cut on the south side of the street too, but the lady there did not want us to put any signs in. That would actually, by state law, be about forty-three feet of parking that would be restricted there because of the location of the sidewalk.
Got it. So both sides are really covered?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Public comment on this item? Okay. Commissioners, any questions or...
Well, I'm just...
Resolved your question?
Yeah, I'm glad that we took the extra week and asked the property owner there whether or not that they wanted to have that parking removed, so. And the new map clears up any parking that issue as to exactly, figure out exactly what we're taking it from, so I'm ready to approve it.
Terry, anything to add?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this?
Mayor, I would move to adopt on first reading ordinance number eighty-nine sixty-one, establishing no parking along the north side of Stevens Drive, fifty feet east and fifty feet west of Pamela Lane.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance number eighty-nine sixty-one by Vice-Mayor Amick, seconded by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes four-zero. Next item on the agenda is to consider the issuance of debt related to water and wastewater master plan improvements, and the purchase of fire equipment and certain road improvements.
Mayor, Commissioners, these projects you have already largely seen. This is part of our spring debt issuance. A number of these projects lap over a number of years, that's why we are continuing the note issuance. We issue notes until we finalize a project, when we go ahead and issue bonds, which are the long-term contracts, the commitments to pay the principal and interest for all those projects. This is a sizable undertaking for the community, so while it's, to some extent, it's ministerial to approve this, and you'll obviously get another chance when you actually conduct the note and bond sale, we wanted to put this on your regular agenda so that you can see these projects. Significantly, in the, in the first memorandum there, the utility department has provided a memo that provides you just with kind of brief snapshots of where a number of these projects are. You are familiar with a number of them. We've accepted the bid for the caulk water supply improvements. If you look out the window on the fourth floor, you can see the, the dirt work already underway up there in, in, in Burcham Park. You're familiar again with the Orient Tank Project, where we've got design consultants in the field looking at a number of different options there. The cog transmission main, you have approved that contract, and we talked about, Philip did a good job of explaining that project is that the pipe will get shoved under the river here later this year. Probably one of the, the big projects is the wastewater treatment plant along the Waukerusa. You're seeing a number of those agenda items showing up, primarily on consent. We've bought property, we've bought property interests. We've had Platts approved for the pump station project there, the pump station facility there at Thirty-First in, in Louisiana, which will serve as really an important heart for the entire sewer system, diverting wastewater to the new plant or sending it on to the existing caulk wastewater treatment plant. So that, that project is proceeding, and you'll be seeing eventually, I think probably later this, this year, contracts for dirt work and public improvements that are associated with the wastewater treatment plant. We've got to move some dirt there on the site and get it compacted and ready then for eventual construction. We've got a taste and odor study. We anticipate getting you a report here later this month. Probably be worthy of some discussion. We'll see exactly how it lands on your agenda as far as timing is concerned. I can go through these projects in any greater detail, and obviously Dave and Mike are here. I think that's pretty much it. And Ed is here, obviously, to talk about many of the financing issues related, but you see quite a bit of progress on that. Then on the, on the nonutility side, we've got some projects as well that you've already previously approved. Chief Bradford was here to work the contract on the apparatus acquisition. You're familiar with our commitments on Thirty-First Street between Haskell and O'Connell. That road construction is underway. Chuck can talk about that if you've got additional interest as well on, on, on that project. But we'd be happy to respond to any questions or comments. I think I've covered all of those. And then you've, as, as you approved, the other nonutility project is you approved the two thousand fourteen street maintenance program. You approved some additional debt issuance for a number of main trafficway improvements, and you see those listed in the memorandum as well. Again, other people are obviously moving this through. I've kind of hit the, hopefully, the highlights, and we'll be happy to respond to any questions that you, you have. Anything else, Ed, Dave, Mike, that we ought to try and cover? I think I've hit most of the main, main items in regards to that. It's a big project, tremendous investment in the community. We're really excited about it, moving these things forward. You'll be seeing here in the spring where we are in regards to these projects, and then requests to approve water and wastewater rate increases as well, that are part of the multi-year plan that you are familiar with in regards to that. This is the, you know, this is the, one of the fun parts is approving the projects. The challenging part is obviously also approving the, the rate increases to do that, but this is substantial investment in the community that we're glad that we're able to do. So, this is all in keeping with that, with that plan.
Good. Is there public comment on this item? Okay. Commissioners, any questions about this?
I just had one. Dave, the Orient Tanks, I noticed on the current project status, it talked about evaluating the site and the scope and the options. I thought that we were going to actually do some repair, but understand that there was going to be possibility of that location being used for something else.
Correct. The, the first, the first phase of the, the work is to evaluate the, the location, whether or not we want to build on the existing site, or perhaps be part of a land exchange with KU interests on the west side of Orient Avenue. But through all of this analysis, what did we say, about thirty percent? We're going to get about thirty percent design work through this first phase of the work. Then that report's going to come back to you. If you all decide, well, let's talk to the University of Kansas, then we'll do that. If not, we won't, and we'll go ahead and then have a design contract actually to get us to bidable documents to, to build whatever is, is desired at that point.
So, so your question was, are we going to still fix it?
Yeah, we're still going to repair it.
And is the answer...
The, the answer, the answer is we are going to replace them. We're not going to fix the existing tanks. They are, that's beyond repair, essentially. We're going to either replace them on-site or replace them across the street.
But originally, weren't we going to fix them?
Well, we looked at whether or not it made sense to fix them, and we presented that information to you all, and, and there's not a good way to fix them and get the, the lifespan and the, the cost that we want out of that, out of those existing tanks.
Okay.
You know, and, you know, we try not to be too silly, but we nicknamed Hoover and Ike because one was built in the fifties and one was built in the thirties. You can see through them, which we know is not what we want with tanks. So the decision's been made that the best thing to do is to completely replace them. They've, they've served the community well, and, and we don't think that it's economically feasible to, to fix that.
I guess the only thing, the only thing that I was looking at was, when talking about evaluating, I thought we'd already done the evaluation, I just didn't want to make sure that we were doing it again.
Well, we're not evaluating that issue. We're evaluating...
We're evaluating the site.
The site.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we weren't doing it again.
Doing enough, and it's, as you know, I mean, it's, it's really interesting in the, in the operation of these things, I mean, the, the tanks serve as, you know, a key part of the distribution network, and we've got to look at how, how we're going to be able to replace them while still providing twenty-four-seven water service through the, for the entire community.
Yeah, well, I just remember, we, we went through all the beautiful pictures of whether or not those things had rusted all the way through or not. I just want to make sure that we weren't talking about the same evaluation.
No, we're not.
Okay, thank you.
This is, it's been an incremental process, one layer essentially building on another.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And the cost to actually replace those tanks will be met when we know what that need is?
Correct.
Because there's no number in here...
It's just under four million dollars on the...
Okay. Okay, so it's, I saw booster, but it's storage replacement is, is what you're talking...
Yeah, it's storage replacement.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So that's part of it. That's in there still, okay? You see, it's, it's...
I see it.
The price is in there.
Under the series ones.
Correct.
Got it.
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
Anyone want to ask our finance director for a prediction on rates here? We'll, we'll do that, okay.
Is he, is he car, is he car mat?
No, he's not, not, it's just, rates will vary. He's still...
Prognostications are not worth much. Right? Okay, so, exactly. Any questions or comments about this large investment in the community?
Doing a lot of needed work.
Seven million.
Can we do these all at one time, or do we have to do them separate? I would move that we adopt resolutions number seventy-sixty-two, seventy-sixty-three, For the fund water and wastewater planned projects and the series one and series two are general obligation temporary notes.
Second. Okay, motion for resolution number seven zero six-two, seven zero six-three, and seven zero six-four by Commissioner Reardon, seconded by Commissioner Farmer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Next item on the agenda is to consider the following items related to the Ninth and New Hampshire Redevelopment District. It's back.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As you mentioned, these are a number of items related to the Ninth and New Hampshire Redevelopment District. Specifically, we're requesting that you approve two resolutions that would set April the eighth as a date for a public hearing on the North Redevelopment Plan, April eighth as a public hearing on a proposed transportation development district. And then the other item on your agenda this evening is first reading of an ordinance that repeals the current transportation development district. As you'll recall, the district was established for the Ninth and New Hampshire Tax Increment Financing Area in two thousand twelve, and last year, you approved the, the amendment to the South Redevelopment Plan. The district has two different areas, so the South Plan has been approved, and now the North Plan is coming forward. So this item will set that public hearing, and there's a public hearing and consideration of a number of other items on your April the eighth agenda, including the redevelopment agreement and industrial revenue bond financing and things like that. I think all of those are listed on your future agenda items for April the eighth. And then with regard to the Transportation Development District, just a little background on that, you all had established a Transportation Development District for this project in two thousand twelve. And when we went to record the documents for this Transportation Development District with the Register of Deeds last year, it came to our attention that the owner on the North Project had signed the petition as an incorrect entity than the actual ownership entity. So the entities were owned by Doug Compton, but, but the petition was signed by the incorrect entity. So in visiting with Gary Anderson about this, because the city stands to be the main beneficiary of the Transportation Development District sales tax in accordance with, with our agreement, we get the first eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is generated there. We want to make sure that that Transportation Development District is very firmly legal, and there's not any question about its validity. So what Gary has recommended is that we undo the existing Transportation Development District and then have before you an item to establish, reestablish it essentially. And you have a petition that's included in your agenda materials that relates to that. And basically, it's the same Transportation Development District parameters that were approved with the existing one, with one small change, well, two small changes. One, we have the right owner. And the second is that the start date for the TDD sales tax moves back from July first of this year to January one of two thousand fifteen. And that's most advantageous to the city and also the developer because the hotel won't be up and running by, by July first of this year. So we're recommending that you take first reading of the action that repeals the current TDD, and then consider the establishment of the public hearing for April the eighth on the creation of the new Transportation Development District. We do have in place a redevelopment agreement on the South that does require the Transportation Development District sales tax, so the city's not in any jeopardy as far as undoing this before it takes action on the new one. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Diane, I have one question. So the timing is what I wanted to make sure I understood. We're going to repeal the existing one mainly for name purposes, and we're changing the date... date just because it's more likely to start collecting taxes in closer to the time, the December date or whatever it was?
Yeah, the January, January one.
That we talked about. So, we could do it without changing the date, but we just, we definitely need to do it because of the name?
Definitely, yes, correct.
And changing the date is just a matter of reality and convenience?
Yeah, and, and now, you know, we know more than we did in 2012 about the schedule of that, of that project, and it will be closer to January one of 2015 than it is to July first. And then the reason why we have to undo this now is we do have to notify the Kansas Department of Revenue, who is set to publish all their sales tax charts for July first, and the TDD is on there. We need to get this ordinance that repeals that to them so that they can remove that. And then, then if the new TDD is approved, when the new TD is approved, we will send them that new information.
Yes, Bob.
The TDD is, has a sunset of ten years, doesn't it? Is, is that a time?
The, the TDD actually goes for a longer period of time until it.
Twenty-two years?
Yeah, it runs twenty.
Or until it collects the hundred percent of the, the amount expended?
Right, right. Or, or as much as it collects in that timeframe.
So, therefore, it behooves us all to push it back if there's no sales generation in the first six months because if we never meet the hundred percent of the expended funds, then we're all short.
Correct. And so, that moving that date is also advantageous for the city and the developer.
And do we need to read this, and do we need to repeal before we consider adopting these other resolutions? There's an order that we need to follow on this from a procedure standpoint?
No, these, these items can, can be considered all by you this evening, and then, then we'll have the follow-up items. We'll have second reading of that, of the ordinance that repeals the TDD on your agenda next week then. And then the remaining items to do the new one would be considered with your agenda April the eighth.
All right. Questions for Diane?
This is just with the funding of this, to pay back bonds that the city is involved with, or how did the city get involved with this?
You mean the, the Transportation Development District or the? The, the Transportation Development District was part of the overall negotiation for the project. It's a, a revenue source, and in this case, it is a revenue source that was generated in order to recognize that that particular property where the hotel's being built was part of an old TIF district and, and would have generated funds toward the, the original project that built the Ninth, Ninth and New Hampshire Parking Garage that's existing across from the Art Center. And so, this recognizes a contribution that they would have paid to that TIF district because we had to remove that property from that old TIF district to create this new one.
Oh, okay.
And that was advantageous to the developer because they can get a larger timeframe now to generate TIF revenue on a new one, since the, the old one has been in place. I think it was created in two thousand or something. So, the city will have the first eight hundred and fifty thousand of the Transportation Development District sales tax. It's basically to go toward the city's expenses related to that parking garage.
Okay. The other part is there was a, a letter from East Lawrence Neighborhood Association with several recommendations and strong recommendations. Although city, although citizen input is very important to us, this is really not talking about any aspects of that, specifically, you know, low, low-income housing and some of the things that were mentioned in that. That's really not on the radar here.
I think that they had provided that letter, that was a letter from maybe a year and a half ago or so. It was provided during the discussions of, of this North project related to the HRC and its meetings, and the, the representative of East Lawrence just requested that we put this out there again. There was also some confusion regarding the number of public meetings that the developers held with the neighborhood related to this North project. And, and I think subsequent to, to that email this morning, I think Mr. Fleming had, had had an email exchange with that representative from East Lawrence about the number of meetings. I think there was some confusion about that. There has been quite a number of meetings held that are, were public meetings or meetings the developer had with the neighborhood on the project. And of course, there will be the opportunity at the public hearing to comment on anything related to the, the North Redevelopment Plan.
I was just wondering how, how that letter got there since it really didn't address what we were actually doing.
He just requested that we add that to your agenda.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions for Diane? All right, thank you. Thank you. Public comment?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Katie Walsh, and I'm representing the Board of the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association tonight. And on that letter, the reason it was requested that it be given to you again is because it lays out the concerns of the East Lawrence Neighborhood Associations, which are still current. And since we're restarting this process, not tonight, but on April eighth apparently, we want our concerns front and center. I did have copies made today, seven copies, but apparently you got it by email? So, I'll give them to the press and to the staff. So, and we would very much like to, we voted last night to invite the architects and the developers to come to our next East Lawrence meeting because if we're starting the process over, we're starting the process over, so let's meet with the neighborhood. And that would be Monday, April seventh, at New York School in the library. Because most of our concerns are listed in the letter, I want to bring up another issue or part of the issue that was discussed. The Spencer Art Museum, and the Board of the Spencer Art Museum is very concerned about the mural, The Pollinators, which is on the northern wall of the former Black Hills Energy Building and faces the Farmers Market. This was a commissioned artwork by community members, and Dave Lowenstein, renowned international muralist who lives in our town. It was part of an exhibition on Aaron Douglas, the wonderful black painter who grew up in Topeka. It's on the cultural history, the cultural black history of Kansas. And the Lawrence Farmers Market Board of Directors has voted that they would very much like to see it preserved. The Board of the Spencer Art Museum would very much like to see it preserved. They attempted to have a meeting with Mr. Compton. He refused. They sent a, a letter. The chancellor wasn't able to attend their second meeting. They finally got one scheduled a couple of months later with Mr. Compton. People were gathered, all of them, ten minutes before he called and said, oh, we couldn't make it. Subsequently, they've been frustrated. Apparently, they did get to meet with an underling this week, and they need to talk about it. It's, as a matter of law, we're, we're unclear where it stands. Dave Lowenstein has a copyright on the image. The building owner has some rights. Spencer Art Museum feels they own it. We may ask Tony at some point, or have you ask her, to look into VERA, the Visual Artists Rights Act, which a lot of muralists, muralists go to for these legal issues about public art. So, the reason I'm bringing this to you is perhaps you could facilitate a meeting to get Mr. Compton to talk with the Spencer Art Museum and the chancellor and all these people who have these deep concerns. It's a pretty big slap in the face to the black community. That's my feeling, so, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Sure.
Katie, can I ask a question, please? When you're saying preserve the mural, are you, how, how are you, what, what is your thinking of, of preservation? Is it, is it to make a screen print of it and apply it to another wall? Is it to photographs? I mean?
These are good questions, yeah. In a perfect world, they would incorporate it into the design, which last time we saw the designs, didn't look that difficult.
Yeah, I, I have no idea what the footprint of the building looks like.
Right. And there are other options, a very poor, but Plan B option would be to have it painted elsewhere, of course, at the developer's expense. There was some talk, apparently Mr. Compton did meet with the Board of Directors of the Farmers Market, and he, his suggestion was he build a wall somewhere in the Farmers Market and replace the mural, which was a little odd because East Lawrence is fighting so hard not to be walled off from downtown by all these developments, so that seems like a little bit of an absurd idea. But I think that could be settled if we could get everyone to talk, you know? Any other questions? Thank you.
This is Dave Lowenstein, seven forty Rhode Island, also talking about The Pollinators mural. I was the coordinating artist for that project. It's a very significant public artwork in our town. It celebrates the contributions of significant African-American artists who went on to lead the Harlem Renaissance. It was commissioned by the Spencer Museum of Art, as you heard. It was their first project off-site for the Spencer Museum of Art. So, this was a, a step forward for the museum and the university coming to downtown. And now, of course, the mural is incorporated into our new arts district, our cultural arts district. So, it would seem ironic if we sort of took away this feature of the arts district. The mural's also been featured numerous times at the National Endowment for the Arts. It's the masthead on our own city's Wikipedia page for our arts section. It even is featured as the definition of public art on the E. Howe website. So, those are all very significant things. I know that the Spencer has met with Robert Green, actually, from First Management about this, and they seemed unawares at first about the significance of the mural, but since their meeting, optimistic here that they're looking into potential ways of preserving the mural. The, the different options there are varied. The Spencer Museum and the Farmers Market and myself, the East Lawrence Neighborhood, would like the mural to be preserved as it is and incorporated into the architecture of the building. If that can't happen, we would talk about other options afterwards. You should also be aware that over a hundred and fifty Lawrence citizens participated in the making of the mural, and it's beloved by many in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Commissioners, my name is Bill Fleming. I'm with Turner Architects, and I don't really have anything to add, but I'm available to answer any questions that you have about the, the project or this process. I haven't been that involved in the, the process about the art. I know there've been some meetings, but I'm not, I'm not really in the know on that. I know we've tried to work on some, some options there. I think we also have some, some public art space on the building that, that we've designed, that's designed to allow public art to be displayed on, on the outside of the new building. So, but other than that, that's about as much as I know about that. If people want more information about that, I can certainly provide that, but I just don't have that here with me, so.
Okay, thanks. Bob, Bill?
Bill.
Bob has a question.
Based on what we've heard, my own personal sense is that I think it'd be great if you all could work with them to see if we can't remedy the situation. I, I'm not sure that wall can stand in that place in your project. I have no idea what your project even looks like, other than some renderings we've looked at, but to try and find some kind of solution that might accommodate everybody with regards to this mural would be helpful. I appreciate your interest.
I will, I will take your comments back.
Thank you.
Mayor, I was going to ask Scott if he could just brief the Commission quickly about the, the land use approvals that are also necessary for this project, so that you'll know that those items may be coming as well.
Sure. In September of 2012, this project gained approval from the HRC for the design, the elevations, and the general design aspects, as well as most of its approvals for the downtown design guidelines. There were two parts of that, some of you would, will recall seeing that the applicant appealed to the City Commission. That was a setback for the building and the angled parking in New Hampshire Street. And through a process, those items were approved as well. So, it has all of its historical design approvals. It still needs to go back to the ARC, which is the Architectural Review Committee Subcommittee of the Historic Resources Commission, for the details of the building materials and the final look of the elevations. It also does need still the formal site plan approval process, whereupon the agencies will review the technical aspects of the driveline widths, the parking, sort of the public improvements in the intersection, and the water and sewer issues, and the alley improvement issues, all of those kinds of issues. It will be the next step for this. So, site planning, final work with ARC, and then eventual building permits is what it takes to get a, a building permit.
Does the site plan come to the City Commission, or is it administrative?
Site plan is administrative function.
I thought this was done.
Oh, yeah. I wonder if there's something we can tie, a discussion regarding the mural probably needs to be had, it can't be put off. I think we need to resolve that. There's some administrative control you have at that point. I don't know if we want to work towards a resolution and then come up with a alternate plan if, if that wall, I think I remember seeing the plans, that I don't think that wall can stay, but I'd like to see what it would take to, you know, move it or reproduce it, in worst-case scenario, as a part of the approval of the site plan.
We'll take that direction, Mayor. The, the project, as it went through the process before, did include some elements such as some space for art on that elevation?
On the wall, yeah.
And restrooms for the, for the Farmers Market as well. So, there were some elements there that were of benefits to the public use as well, but we'll take a harder look at that.
Just, I don't, just take a look at the map, maybe, maybe you can let us know in response to Bob's question, and I think in general, what, how it stands now, the footprint. Even though you haven't seen the site plan, I know you've seen preliminary renderings, and I'm sure that's.
Right, we have a concept site plan that we use through that process of design.
Okay.
What we might do is we might ask the applicant to provide an update on the, the mural issues at the April eighth hearing. That, that gives everybody a full month to talk, and we'll, we'll see if we can't facilitate some of those discussions. It doesn't, we're not conditioning anything.
No.
But, but at least you'll get some more information, and we're all interested in that, and you've heard from a couple of people that are as well, so.
Yeah. Some of the creators. Any other public comment?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I'm sorry, I'm dressed as I am. I, I work outside, and it's cold out there. I'd lie. But I just said a, I said a couple of questions. Are you doing the architecture work on the, on the new building?
General counsel.
Hey, excuse me. What was your name? I'm sorry.
My name is Garrett Tufti.
Garrett, can you address your questions to the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
To us? That's just normal procedure, and then we'll get an answer for you. That's just part of the procedure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it seems with a building like that, I guess, I guess it depends on what the wall's made of. But something like that, I think, I've seen the mural before, and it's, it's large, it's, it's big, something like thirty feet by fifteen, twelve, something like that. And it's not impossible to move, to even keep intact. If it's made out of brick with a little bit of mortar, it could still be done. It just, it would take a fair amount of, fair amount of work to do it, and a kind of a concerted and well-organized effort by the people involved to move it then. And short of, short of that, hopefully that isn't necessary, well, my personal opinion in this case, because this, this art that we create here in town is something that is quite unique to Lawrence, and to, to do away with it, to, and to create sort of another building that is already redundant in our downtown neighborhood seems unnecessary and a bit foolish, I would say. Yeah, and that's all. Thank you.
Okay. And I think in response to your question, he's not an architect. He's the applicant's attorney and represents them, but he's not an architect.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? All right, Commissioners, we need to undo something, and we need to create some new Any comments or questions about it?
No, I just, I guess I thought, again, as I just mentioned to you, Mayor, I thought we were kind of far into this process. One of the things that caught me off-guard a little bit was Casey's comment about, you know, kind of starting over, so that concerned me a little bit, but...
Yeah, I don't know, I don't view that we're starting over.
No, I...
Clearly, the land use approvals have proceeded to the point that they're at, and the administrative procedures are such that we are recreating something that you all had previously created for very legitimate reasons, to make sure that the appropriate owner has signed the document, and then also because we now know when the hotel's going to open, and we have a very strong interest in making sure we get a full TDD payment.
Good idea.
Any other comments?
The only comment I would have is, you know, this was a controversial development. I think it was handled well by the city commission and by the developers, and I would encourage them to continue in the line of working with the public on this particular issue and trying to resolve it before that April 8th time.
Yeah. Here, which item do you want to take, you want to consider first?
Do 7056, please.
I would approve adoption of Resolution Number 7056, setting the date for public hearing on April 8th, 2014.
Second. Motion to approve Resolution Number 7056 by Vice Mayor Amick, seconded by Commissioner Farmer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 7061, setting the date for the public hearing on April 8th of 2014.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Amick, and a second by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Lastly?
I would make a motion to adopt on first reading, Ordinance Number 8963, repealing the existing transportation development district for the 9th and New Hampshire redevelopment project.
Second. Okay. Motion to approve Ordinance 8963 by Vice Mayor Amick, seconded by Commissioner Shum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much, gentlemen, and thank you for the public comment on it. Next item is general public comment.
I'm Susan Earl from the Spencer Museum of Art, and wanted to share a thought about the Pollinators mural at the site. This is a rare case where an art museum commissioned a community mural. Very often, they grow out of the community efforts itself, and this was a collaboration with artist Dave Lowenstein and with the community. And it is a really significant mural. We have recently made some progress with the developer in discussing it, and we're trying to feel optimistic that they understand the importance of it and that we can work together towards preserving it. I think it's really important to the community, many constituents, not just the art museum, of course, many constituents, farmer's market, East Lawrence Neighborhood Association, the Downtown Arts Commission, the City Commission, Historic Resources Commission, and others to preserve the mural, if at all possible. It also had National Endowment for the Arts funding, and it has taken on a life beyond just this community and its significance. It's really helped put Kansas on the map in terms of community, public art, in quite an important way, and has been published and featured. And I think it's something that we all want to rally together to preserve.
Thank you for coming out and telling us that. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Could I just ask you a couple of questions?
Yes.
Very simple. When you have public art like this, is that something that has to be, somebody has to take care of it and update it or keep it from being deteriorated by the weather?
Well, it's a great question. Dave Lowenstein, you've used really good materials. It has held up really well. He's very knowledgeable about that, but it's a great question, and sometimes they do deteriorate. You may have seen that Dave has actually been restoring a mural at 9th and Mississippi. Sometimes that can occur. This one is pretty young, so it's still in very good condition, but that is something that does sometimes occur, yes. There is an upkeep that I think we all are committed to doing. Dave and the community and the museum would be committed to its upkeep in perpetuity.
Is there a lifespan for something like this?
Well, it's also a really good question. I mean, Dave may have an answer to that. You know, there's currently, New York City has recently had some controversy about a mural there by Picasso that's kind of in a more private space in the Four Seasons Restaurant of all places. But there's also recently been quite a bit of attention to murals in Chicago and in Philadelphia. Philadelphia in particular has done an incredible job of maintaining and preserving its murals. And Chicago also, in many of those instances, there are neighborhoods that are not being protected, and there are a lot of forces against them, but the community often really rallies in whatever way is possible, because they become really important to the community. In the case of this mural, I think it's really important to the whole state of Kansas due to what it represents, which is really influential, pollinating figures who are African-American from the state of Kansas who went out to contribute across the nation and beyond. And I think recognizing them is really important to this community and to the state. So the mural, as I say, is in very good condition. We would love to keep it right where it is. If it needed to be temporarily moved or something, we will figure that out, but I do think, we hope very much to have your support in continuing the presence of the mural in downtown, which I think has been very important to us.
Thank you. There's a very interesting mural on Cotton's Hardware that's been there for several years that I've looked at for a long time, go down there often.
Yes.
And it still seems to be in pretty good shape, so I thought it might be a long period of time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All art, all the time. Per your question, in a whole lot of cities, not Lawrence yet, the Cultural Arts Commission has a fund to maintain the public art, the art that's paid for by the Present for Art program. We do not have that. I know our current commission is gathering information from all the artists over the years who've created things about what it's made of, you know, how much would it cost to repair it, repaint it, reweld it, whatever, so that they can get some framework about what it would cost to have a maintenance program. So FYI. Hard act to follow, Susan Earl, but I wanted to tell you about bus stops. If you Google creative bus stops, there are so many communities in our nation, of course overseas, who are engaging artists on their bus stops, so they're not these, no offense, but just dull plexiglass, you know, they do keep you a little warmer. They're lovely, but they're not very exciting. And it's a way to get kids involved. You, of course, have specs, you know, it has to be handicap accessible, it has to be this rugged, able to be maintained, et cetera. But people can work together to create bus stops that express, you know, their neighborhood, their business district. So I would just urge everybody to explore, Google creative bus stops when you have a spare moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. Any discussion of future agenda items, Dave?
No, sir. I'm cognizant of the fact that you and Commissioner Farmer will be coming in in time for our meeting next Tuesday.
Indeed.
Just similar to today.
Wouldn't want you to be late.
The 1101 Indiana project, while it has a unanimous planning commission recommendation, it's a large project. They've talked to us about public incentives. We don't have anything completed from them as far as a request. I think there was some public discussion at the planning commission agenda, so I'm going to recommend, Mayor, that we have that as a regular agenda item next week. But really exciting project, if you look at those renderings, it's a really neat-looking facility. So that'll be on your regular agenda next week.
Any reason why we keep TBD-ing the Oriad Neighborhood study?
We actually met on that yesterday. We are close to having that ready for the agenda. I think we have Mr. Watts' parking request that really is related. It's a pilot that's really suggested in the study, so I think we're ready to have that here hopefully soon. I think Scott was there, and Chuck, I think, was there at the meeting.
I think we're hoping by early April to have that on the agenda.
Okay. Very good. All right, any commission items this evening? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I stopped.
No.
No? Well, I was going to...
There's no second, yeah, absolutely.
I just want a couple of things. Just wanted to be sure, remind everybody about the advisory board reception Thursday. You see that on calendars. It's a good opportunity to thank those citizens that are helping us with their advisory board participation. And then we've got the 2015 Budget Process Calendar. Maybe tonight's not a good night to do it. I've gotten comments from Commissioner Shum and Commissioner Reardon about their travel plans. I'm not suggesting that what we've got here is the final product, but here at some point we want to start nailing those dates down. So if you want to keep looking at it, we can look at it again next week. I know there's travel plans and such this summer, so anyway, we don't need to do it tonight, but lucky to assume.
Is that on the regular calendar, or is it...
Well, if you go down there where it says calendar, you go below that where it says one, adopt the 2015 Budget Process Calendar. What we've got there are, I think there's, Casey, we've got four different dates that are in blue, May 20th, a study session date, June 17th, and I know Commissioner Reardon is just going to be coming back from travel plans on that date, so we might want to think about moving that. And then we've got a study session after you've received my recommended budget on July the 8th. And then obviously, one of the key dates is when you authorize the publication of the budget on the 22nd of July, because that's your setting the maximum mill levy and the maximum budget authority. That's usually where you've pretty much, I don't want to say you've adopted the budget, but you're getting pretty close. And then obviously, that public hearing on the budget, then on August the 5th. So anyway, those are just, we haven't really spent any time highlighting those dates, but I know, and we can work any way around that. We're here to respond to you all as far as when you want to meet and go over it, but the key is making sure that Casey, by August the 25th, can hit send on the adopted budget when she sends it down to the county clerk. So anyway, we don't need to spend any more time on it tonight unless you all want to, but you can look at that and check plans, check plans with significant others about how you want to spend your summer. We love budget time.
We do. Okay, so are we done with the interjection?
Yes, sir. Thank you for letting me do that.
Motion by Commissioner Reardon?
I moved.
Second, but, oh, you moved. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
I was interrupted there. I was interrupting there.